Oh, call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Citizen comments, if you're not on the agenda, would like to talk to the council, now would be the perfect time to do that. Okay, seeing no one, we have reading and approval of minutes from July twenty-third. Regular meeting.
I'll move approval of the July twenty-third regular meeting.
Hold a second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We have the same condensed version. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we have the minutes from the August first special meeting. Of a minute.
Move approval of the special minute meeting.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We have the consent agenda consisting of audit of city bills, pass but number twenty-three for magnetic construction for the water treatment plant, pay estimate number one for the two thousand nineteen street reclaims, uh, final pay estimate for Eleanor Brook and Court project, July transit report, up just a little bit from last year, um, gambling report from the Eagles and the September eighteenth, uh, planning commission minutes. Minutes. Now I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Any discussion or questions on any of the items?
Uh, let's see, I, one, actually a couple of them. Line twenty, it comes up under Jim Dibbener, it's the water park reimbursement for thirty-six forty-nine, three thousand six hundred forty-nine dollars. What is that exactly?
Um. Well, it's, it's a pump, is what it is. So, one of the, one of the issues that we wind up having from time to time is that, um, they don't take POs as much as they used to in the past, so he probably put it on his credit card. To order them. Cause I've, I've done that with things myself. Um, there, it, with the tightening of the bank regulations and stuff, it's, it's harder sometimes to deal with stuff and I, and this, I know they wanted to get this one shipped immediately. Cause it was the water park. That they wanted to replace.
Okay. Is that now, that fixes the problem? Cause I know a couple of times it was down, or one time for sure.
Yeah. Well, it's never gonna fix the problem. That, that, that system is tremendously maintenance-heavy. And, and actually, they replaced the whole pump, is what they did. Um, and, and Brad actually got it up and running before the new pump came, cause the old pump failed and he had another pump that was at the shop that, um, he put in and it actually worked. But, uh, it, it's really, really hard on those kind of parts and the original construction of that water park uh, probably wasn't necessarily the best way to build it. Maybe it's the best way to put it. So they spent a lot of time trying to keep it up and running. You know, and, um, lately it's been a lot better because they've, they've restructured it so that, um, the equipment that has less wear and tear when they're turning it on and it goes off and they turn it on all the time. But, uh, but yeah, well, and we actually talked about it before the season started. Cause what they tried to do is they tried to keep everything running. And in some cases, you gotta look forward and, uh, it's one thing to try to put something together and keep it running and, you know, the best thing we probably could've done was just order a new pump and put a new pump in before the season started. Then to try to keep piecing one together and then have it fail right in the middle of the hottest time period when everybody wants to use it.
Kids waiting to go in there, cause I heard several.
And hot out, I'm sure.
It was, it was a hot day and there were several groups out there and I knew somebody from out of town that came specifically for that.
Right.
Is that something that can be looked at every year? Like, do you estimate this pump can work so many hours and then after those hours you can go, hey, let's just order it with me?
It can, or, you know, I don't know what the life expectancy of that splash park is. You know, when it was built.
How long has it been?
It's been quite a while. I mean, I, I've been here since two thousand seven, it was here before I got here.
About twelve years.
You kidding me? I didn't, I wouldn't guess that.
And then we put that, we plumbed that water in there.
Yeah. So that's better for, when we got city water, it was better for it, now it's got softened water.
Right.
So that's even better for it.
Right.
So, so hopefully, but it's, there's a lot of, lot of valves and a lot of connections and a lot of little, I mean, just, all you have to do is look at it. There's little features where water goes up and stuff and actually, you know, one of the problems I run into is, you know, things get stuck in the little holes where the water shoots out, that's on the ground and they gotta clean those out and, and take care of it, so. So I guess there's no real answer to that question.
And then the only other question I have is that, line fifty-nine, the dock park supplies, we must've bought all of the material, it was like fifteen thousand and then the women of the day reimbursed us, is that kind of all that shook out?
That's the way it worked.
Okay. That's really the only couple of questions I have.
Okay, any other questions on any of the items on the consent agenda? Um, September eighteenth, planning commission, they haven't met since then? Or just wants to approve that?
Yeah, it was just once and.
Yeah, that, that, they, they hadn't really met.
Cause they didn't have anything to meet, but.
You know, I, one of the things I said at the planning commission, you know you did a good job of putting together your zoning map and all those kind of things and the rules and regulations when nobody needs you to fix it to be able to do what they wanna do. You know, and, and that's really what it comes down to. Most of the stuff that comes in is already allowed and the rules are already there and there isn't anything special that needs to be done and we have a couple of them that came in this year, like with, uh, the conditional use for jerrys you save and, um, changed a little bit of stuff, but yeah, so if there's nothing in form to do, it just doesn't make sense to meet.
Right. Well, that's good. That's good. I just wanted to be sure. I kinda thought that's what it was. Uh, any other comments on the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Prairie Pioneer Days budget.
Yeah, and I didn't actually give you a real budget document, just because of the nature of how things have changed between the chamber and the city and Prairie Pioneer Days, but, uh, uh, there's actually three items that, that we're, we're gonna take responsibility for. One is the fireworks. Uh, we take the lead on that and, and there is some money that got donated for that. Twenty-five hundred dollars from Northern Tractor, I think it was, and then fifteen hundred dollars from the Eagles. Uh, the only change with fireworks is that the firemen are not gonna shoot them anymore. Um, so that, and that came up right at the last minute, that, uh, they normally would take that, um, Justin Howell was the lead guy that, I think it was Fred Mosher before him, that, that would actually shoot it and so what we're doing is we're having the pyrotechnic company is gonna shoot it, the show, and I'll be meeting with, uh, representative next week to look at a site. I think we're gonna shoot them behind Wilkins Industry, they've done that before.
What, wh- what was the reasoning behind it, do you know?
Uh, they're just too busy to do it anymore. The, Justin's.
You gotta be licensed, you gotta go and shoot so many shows, you have to upkeep and it's just, to, to maintain it, you just have to go and spend your weekends going to do stuff and.
Okay, you know, being.
He's on the fair board and.
Yeah, no, I know that. Um, but being that, you know, we're, we being the city of Morris Fire Department, whatever, aren't doing it, um, should there be a cost savings on our insurance? Because we're hiring actually somebody that should have that insurance?
Um, there could be, yeah.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's probably a question.
That's one of the things that we're looking at and actually working with the fireworks company because it's actually still our, the interesting part about it is when, when Justin was doing it, he's responsible for it. You know, he's got the license, he takes care of it. We have insurance. Uh, this company is gonna come in and shoot it, but it's still our show. So we're, we're responsible for finding a place to shoot it and then we're responsible for making sure that they know and understand, you know, if, if it's gonna be canceled, if there's a problem with weather, whatever it is and, and so we have to spend a little bit more time, so there, it could be that our insurance may require us to keep insurance anyway, since part of what we do is put on a fireworks show.
It'd be worth asking, I think, yeah, for sure.
But it is, it's a little bit more expensive to have them do it, cause they're gonna come in and spend the time to set it up and, and, uh, choreograph it and all that kind of stuff and so that's one of the reasons why I added another thousand dollars. They can't actually tell you exactly what that cost is, cause they, they don't bid shows that way. If they're gonna do them, they'll give you a price. If, if you want to just buy fireworks, they'll give you a price. Uh, and it's, it's more geared towards how much money you wanna spend and this is what we'll give you for that. So it's not like going into a fireworks stand and picking out rockets and stuff like that. So I think, I think it'll be okay and it's, it's probably gonna be a little bit simpler maybe moving forward, cause they know and understand what, what they need to be doing and they, like the gal said, they shoot fireworks shows three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year. That's what they do for a living. They, they do fireworks shows and actually, I think Justin was working for, for them doing them and I think Fred was working for them and doing them in other places and, and they worked out some stuff. So that's one part of it, is fireworks. Uh, another part is the games and so we actually, um, uh, they told us what games they wanted and we actually contracted for them. So it's, it's around twenty-five hundred dollars for games and then the last thing is advertising. And, uh, basically what we'll do, I, I put fifteen hundred dollars in here for radio advertising. Uh, what we'll do is we'll, we'll coordinate with radio stations to do that. But it won't be done through the Chamber of Commerce, it'll just be done through tourism and through us. And I've already made contact with, uh, a number of radio stations, uh, based upon what the criteria is for marketing and tourism and actually some of them are outside of our area, but they still cover our area, like KFJO out of Fargo and, and, uh, one oh four point three out of Watertown. You can get a lot of people out in South Dakota, you can get a lot of people out in North Dakota. You can still get those radio stations here, uh, and be able to hear them, so. So that's what it is, that's what we're looking for, is the city council to give a thumbs up for that and we'll work with the chamber.
So just to clarify, seven thousand dollars, but then the last sentence says four thousand coming from donations, so what are the donations again?
Uh, fifteen hundred dollars from the Eagles and twenty-five hundred dollars from Northern Tractor.
But that's the total package of the fireworks.
Total package of the fireworks.
That's not the total package of everything. See the seven thousand, our part is only three.
Okay, so.
The fireworks, add that on to the.
Total fireworks show is seven thousand.
But if we're, we're approving seven thousand coming from the lodging tax.
What was it, fifteen hundred for radio?
Yeah, I wrote that. I just wrote it wrong, so we're.
So that's why I'm.
We're approving three from lodging tax for fireworks, twenty-five hundred for games and fifteen hundred for advertising.
So there is no four thousand dollars coming from donations?
Well, it's over and above the seven thousand.
Oh, over and above, okay, that's, then that, that's what you thought that was written wrong.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Well, it's confusing the way it was put together, yeah, for sure.
Well, as you're reading it, it looks like four thousand, about seven thousand is coming from donations. And so I'm assuming the tourism board, since this is their part of the money, they were all okay with this, or do you run that by them, or is that part of their?
Yeah, yeah, they're okay with it. Actually, they, they looked at it the last time when, when the budget was a little bit different coming from the chamber, but, but we also have money that's in the budget for advertising. So the, and this year, you'll see it again when I present the budget, there's actually a, a tour, a lodging tax fund budget that has, uh, chunk of money that's set aside for advertising. You know, so, you know, because this is for the, uh, the Prairie Pioneer Days, we just break it out separately. But yeah, they're okay with it.
So, we need a motion to approve the seven thousand of funding from the lodging tax fund.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Ordinances and resolutions. We have resolution approving an airport master plan.
So Marcus is here. To make the presentation on this. And you can just nod at me when you wanna slide change.
Good evening. Marcus Watson, TKDA, lead airport planner. Um, here to present the findings of the airport master plan study. Little background about the master plan. I have a little about a ten-minute presentation, just so you know, um, approach of the highlights of what the plan is, being much of it is similar to the executive summary that was sent out at the time. Um, master plan for airport is a comprehensive study of an airport describing the development plans to meet future aviation demand. And we look out typically about a twenty-year planning horizon for planning studies. Um, the goal has been to provide the city of the boroughs with a positive framework for airport development to satisfy aviation demands by considering both environmental and socioeconomic impacts. Uh, the study began about eighteen months ago in December of twenty seventeen and we've had quite a bit of public and agency outreach and involvement throughout that, that period. Um, one of which is a technical advisory committee that was established. There are about fourteen members, including council member Delikson, representing city council on that. Um, representing city, county, economic development, fish and wildlife, local businesses and airport facilities. There were three meetings throughout the study, um, to go through the technical elements and to provide feedback. Um, there are also numerous coordination efforts with the Federal Aviation Administration and the Office of Aerohnics, they provided some really good feedback and, um, I'd say good experiences on the development plan that's been built for, um, that's been a history this year. And then there was an open house that was held in late February, looking to focus on the short-term airport development, which includes a runway extension out over here in the ZJ. Uh, so one of the items that we investigated pretty heavily throughout the study, um, was the aviation activity. And in summary, um, looking at the activity that's out there now and it's forecasted to be there the next twenty years, um, we're seeing forecasting a growth in base aircraft, so a number of aircraft that called Boris home, growing from eighteen now to twenty-four in the future. Two of those are forecasted to be business jets. Annual operations are predicted to grow about one percent per year. It's pretty conservative, from about six thousand to seventy-five hundred takeoffs and lanes per year. Averages out to be about twenty per day takeoffs and lanes. And what really, um, stood out and became a driver for the development proposals is the type of activity out at the airport. Um, right now, there's a real good mix of recreational traffic, air cargo that comes in multiple times a week, ag spray operations, local business activity. The lar- the largest airplane that regularly uses the airport is a turboprot, a Boeing by Superior Industries. Um, that is projected to, in the next five years, to be upgraded from a turboprot to a business jet. It's larger, it's heavier, it's faster, and that's a result of the facility needs, a lot of our needs to accommodate that airport. So, that became a real driver for some of the facility needs, particularly in the next five years. Um, so to that end, the key short-term facility needs, we look out to the next five years, when we say short-term, um, is to extend the runway from its current length of about four thousand feet now to just short of forty-nine hundred feet, along with extending the associated parallel taxiway. Reconfiguring and expanding the aircraft parking apron, so that's the wingtip setback requirements and just enhance the safety of the maneuvering of airplanes around parking and fueling facilities. Providing additional space for future hangar development. Um, you can see in the photo there, um, to that need, what we call the crossroad runway, the turf runway, runway four-two-two is close to the hangers, the apron and the fuel area. There's no place for an additional hangar to go if somebody were to want to build one. And so that became a key consideration of looking at different options for future development. So opening up space for hangar development was an important need for the future. And then upgrading existing infrastructure, as you would, even if you're just maintaining the airport, rebuilding pavements, upgrading or, um, they operate the fuel system was also a key item that came out of the study. Uh, so the recommended master plan that been put forth, it's put together in phases. So what you can see here, this was also included in the executive summary, um, the development that's shown in blue is the short-term proposed development, uh, which includes reconstructing and extending the primary runway of one-four-three-two to that four thousand eight hundred ninety-nine feet that I mentioned earlier. That was part of a robust alternatives analysis. And of the four runway options that were proposed, forty-eight ninety-nine was the least impactful alternative, but still met the majority of the user needs and so that was selected as the preferred alternative. As we go into the future, the yellow and the gentle items are more longer-term development. Um, that may or may not happen, it's something that would be certainly proposed and preserved in the plan, but not something that's proposed to be built in the next five years. So that includes upgrading the runway approach and extending the runway ultimately to five thousand four hundred feet. Um, that's proposed to be included in the long-term plan. Um, a side note, the airport is currently zoned to protect your six thousand feet and so going to fifty-four hundred feet actually reduces the ground footprint of that zone being added and complicated. The other recommendation is to close turf runway four-two-two and the users that were present as part of the tax meetings did not see an issue with that, um, to go from a two-runway airport to a single runway airport. Um, so that was that recommendation in order to open up the future building development. Again, if somebody were to propose a new hangar, there's a spot for them to, to build. And then that can now support further development to these. And then as with any other item, just to, um, preserve and maintain other existing infrastructure, etc. Uh, so the proposed short-term actions in the next five years, these are what are currently being evaluated in the environmental assessment. The city council approved work back in March, we're currently working on that study for the city. Um, so in order to get to that runway extension, the following actions would be needed. To acquire land, to update the airport zoning organs, which is an overlay zoning organs. Reconstruct and extend the runway to the southeast. Um, reconstruct and extend the aircraft parking area, close the turf runway and then construct a extension to the hangar site taxiway to provide uh, the ability for aircraft to access any future hangar that. So the implementation plan, again, our focus for this plan because of the needs is on the next five years, the short-term implementation, which includes the runway extension, the apron work, upgrading the fuel system and closing the turf runway. In total, all of those projects that are proposed are over twelve million dollars. Typically, what we see as part of planning studies is that, um, it's a snapshot in time. The projects are based upon local approval, local demand, available funding. Uh, but if all the needs were met with projects in the short term, that's what we see now, is twelve million dollars worth of improvements to meet aviation demands. Of which, um, the Federal Aviation Administration, um, is supposed to provide the vast majority of that funding and they've already, um, expressed their support for the project and putting it on a high priority list for funding starting as early as next year. So the local share of all of those improvements will be about one million dollars over the next five years. Beyond that, we start to get into a little bit more fluid, it's based on actual demand. Um, get into the six to ten-year period in the mid-term, um, total needs go down significantly after the short-term investment. Mostly it's pavement rehabilitation, um, additional, um, fencing and taxi lanes to serve future hangar development. So you can see that total cost is around five million, that's proposed. And then in the long-term, uh, the proposed need, the dollars, the improvements to meet all of the aviation demands that are forecasted to be needed, which would include, um, upgrading the runway approaches, constructing replacement T-hangers, um, as many of those were reached their useful, end of their useful life at that point, and selling wildlife nets and then updating the master plan. A key note here about the implementation is that adopting the master plan is not an endorsement of approval to complete the projects. It provides the city with that framework, so that if the needs come up or when the needs come up, the plan is in place in order to, um, secure federal and state funding for those improvements. So in conclusion, uh, the next steps for the study, um, is for the city council to consider approval and then certainly I can answer any questions specifically on that plan. Um, to submit what's called the airport layout plan, the ALP, that is the drawing set of all of our proposed improvements that would get submitted to MNDi Aerohnics and the FAA for their approval. And then also to continue work on the environmental assessment to enable, um, funding and implementation of our short-term actions I mentioned. Runway extension, runway reconstruction and then the. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
That looks pretty good. Does anybody have any questions?
Not really, it's very thorough, I mean, it's something that is, is real beneficial to our community.
Well, I think one of the big keys, the, you know, what he's saying is, we, we pretty much know what the short-term plan is, cause we've been doing a lot of talking about it and, you know, uh, actually the FAA and, and MNDi Aviation jumped on that right away to the point where, you know, we've already started doing things before this was even finished, just because they liked it so well and, and, and at the same time, we know that some of the long-term stuff, uh, there's gonna be a lot of discussion that'll take place before you ever get to the point where you're gonna do some of that and actually, there's some really kinda touchy issues, uh, with, you know, tarred county roads and wildlife areas and highways and stuff like that. Uh, but at the same time, you know, it, it was a good chance to look at the airport as the airport and what would happen, um, in the short term, what would happen in the long term and, um, everybody pretty much had a chance to come in and have a say about it. Uh, and, and that's what the whole purpose of the master plan process is. You know, this is a year-long process and once it's done, then you submit it into, to the FAA and then they, they approve it and then ultimately that's our plan moving forward. So as things come up, if they're not in the plan, then you're probably gonna have to come back and take a look at it again, but, you know, it's a good chance to look at everything.
You said the local share was one, approximately one million?
Well, it's important to keep in mind that that's different than your capital improvement plan, but if all the projects were completed and funding were secured, matching funding from the FAA and the state, then yes, the, the total local share would be about one million on twelve million dollars of influence.
Yeah, and as you know, that we have an agreement in place where Superior's gonna cover pretty much the local share of the runway extension and all those things that go with it. And there's some normal maintenance stuff that we have to do. You know, with regards to pavement and things like that, but.
The timeframe to relocate County Road Seven, put that whole scheme of things, when does that fit into it?
That would be in the long-term, that what we're showing on there as part of the implementation would be the eleven to twenty-year period. And that would be triggered by a need for improved approaches to runway three-two. That was evaluated as part of, uh, the alternative for the short term and that was something that because of the land impacts and the roadway impacts was dismissed as something that that would be needed here, but it's still preserved in that plan to be able to show that. And then if that were to be something that's desired by the city of users, there will be a whole separate process to go through with that.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Marcus. So we'll bring it back to the council for. So we'll bring it back to the council for the resolution approving the airport master plan.
I'm going to move on that resolution approving the airport master plan and authorize its submission to MINDA and FAA.
I will second that.
All right. Any further discussion? It's pretty exciting, really.
It is.
Okay, we'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
For Sally?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Elickson?
Yes.
Mary Keith?
Yes. And we have resolution authorizing a supplemental request for the airport environmental assessment contract.
You want to, you want to just explain that, Marcus?
Real quickly, I mentioned in the last update presentation that council authorized the environmental assessment back in March for continuing work on that study. One of the things that came up as part of this, knowing that there is an accelerated schedule to take advantage of federal funds as soon as twenty twenty for the runway extension, is to secure as much preliminary information that would aid in the project design now versus the winter when the environmental assessment will be approved. And so in working with the city, with Blain, and also with the FDA to determine eligibility of that work, we propose to have the geotechnical work that will support the design of the runway extension to be included as part of the environmental assessment contract. So that's here before you. The total increase in cost would be six thousand six hundred dollars. And northern testing would complete that work on part of, it'd be ten geotechnical soil boards that would be done this summer. In the end, it's something that's needed for the runway design. We're trying to avoid getting to that point in the winter where that would significantly increase the cost of the project.
Great. Thank you.
And they can get it, does this fall?
Yes.
Makes sense to do it. I'll move on that resolution authorizing the supplemental request for the airport environmental assessment contract.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Elickson?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Mary Keith?
Yes. We have resolution authorizing ADA crosswalk survey and report.
So one of the requirements we have under the municipal state aid highway system now is that not only whenever we do a project, like Seventh Street they're doing right now, whenever we do a project, you wind up redoing the corners, handicap corners. But there's a requirement that we have to provide a report to the state on the entire city. So we have to survey every corner of every road, and then we have to prepare a report and we have to give it to the state. And that's part of the requirement to continue getting state aid funding. And so WSN has proposed a package to do that survey work and to put together a report for the state of Minnesota. I'm recommending that city council authorize that in the amount of twenty-five thousand ten dollars. And there's an attachment that shows what they'll actually be doing for that money. But it's something that we have to do. And actually, I'll probably be coming back to the city sometime in the next couple months. And then we're probably going to, I'm probably going to recommend that we do a survey for Americans with disabilities on all of our buildings. I don't know if it's ever been done. I know when I was in Breckenridge, we had to do that. And we wound up doing it for all of our buildings. We have been doing some updating, like the electronic door on the front of the senior center and the front of city hall and some things like that. But I don't know that we have a current survey of all of our properties. And that includes parks. You know, and to make sure that they're handicapped accessible, whether it's bathrooms or even playground equipment, things like that. But this one's for the handicap corners. So...
Is this just on the state aid or not?
No, it's on every single road in town. You're not required to go in and fix them all, but you're required to survey them all. They just want to know where you're at as far as all your roads. And I would venture to guess anytime we wind up doing a road project, they're probably going to encourage you to update the handicapped corners, you know. And depending on what's there, if there's nothing there, that's one thing. If there is something there, it's probably not in compliance with the current standards. Seventh Street just got redone, front of city hall just got redone, you know, that corner. But we have to do it for every, every street in town.
So once this is done, and if those standards change, that doesn't matter? In ten years, we have a list of what sidewalks need to be handicapped accessible or updated? It won't make any difference what the standard is now versus ten years from now? We don't have to do that?
No, probably, probably, they, I don't know that they would come back and say, now you have to do a new survey with the new standards, but they could. I mean, they could, but, I mean, it's just, it's, you know, like in the downtown area when they redid all the sidewalks, you know, because the angles aren't quite right anymore. And it's just amazing how that stuff happens. Seems like every single state highway project or, you know, state aid road project winds up having that happen.
And then do we pay for that, like the Seventh Street ones now? Did we pay to have those up? I mean, I know we did then, but did we pay to survey that?
Um, no, it's part of, it's part of the state aid road project that we're doing. So they go in and they check them and then they redo them as part of that project. And then it's funded by state aid funding.
To use state aid money on it, you have to comply with it.
I get that. It just seems like a lot of money that paid.
We have a question or a point here.
I'd just like to add that when I started in the business in nineteen sixty-eight, until now, there have been seven models for handicap corners.
Seven.
We've gone through seven different matters of doing things. And this latest one, they're doing it all over the state of Minnesota right now.
Yep.
And they're changing the angles of the approach. They're changing the angles of the way the water runs around the corners. But like I say, this is the seventh model in forty-five, fifty years that I've been working in the business. So in answer to your question, it's going to change again because the salesman will once again talk to the politicians. That's where this all comes from. And it makes me angry. We won an award on Main Street in nineteen ninety-three for disability. And then we had to redo the whole thing.
Right.
Two, three years ago.
Because they changed the degree of angle.
Yeah. And that's okay. And we probably have seven of those different approaches around the town. Every different one, yeah. Okay, thanks, Jay.
I wonder which one works the best.
The most recent one.
They're all working fine.
But, you know, I know we have to do this. I mean, that's obvious that we have to, we have to do this. But of course, that always brings up the question, okay, like especially like on Seventh Street, they fixed the corner, they fixed the corner, what about the stuff in between? You know, that's, that's, you know, we have a sidewalk survey. Will this ADA crosswalk survey kind of, will that meld into that survey in any way that we can?
No, this will be a separate survey and report. But, but when we get into the city manager newsletter, you'll see that we sat down, we talked about that.
Okay.
You know, and, you know, because we're going to survey the sidewalks. But we'll probably just do that internally because these handicap things are more technical.
Yeah, right.
You know, whereas, you know, I can, I can walk down a sidewalk and have been lately, and it's really easy to see where we have some issues with sidewalks right away.
All right. I will move the resolution authorizing an ADA crosswalk survey and report. Any further discussion?
This does not have to go out for a bit or anything?
No.
Okay.
No, because there are engineers.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. That's a good question. Any other discussion? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Councilmember Elickson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Mary Keith?
Yes. City manager report.
I haven't had a two-pager for a long time, but we did not get our electrical buses.
Homer?
The metro transit in the Twin Cities got the grant from Minnesota. But the state people contacted me and said they're still very interested in it. They're looking at other options, maybe doing another grant application, and we'll see where that goes. We had to do one more project at the library on the current ground source heat pump system, but it should be done now. The actual, that's a doubt.
Sorry, Blaine.
Sorry, Blaine. Just kind of following through from what Jay was saying.
They kind of raised a hair in the back of my neck, actually, about that. We just redid some of the pumping and all sorts of stuff. And they put the stuff in a barrel, and then they pushed it back into the system. And now all of a sudden, it's bad.
But one of the, one of the things I would just tell you is that when we went into this, we didn't hire them to do a comprehensive study of the entire system from top to bottom. And actually, we wound up having to have a company come in and test the fluid in the system. And that's where they found out that the glycol in there, there's too much glycol, number one. But there's also some other chemicals in there, corrosion parameters that are not allowed. And actually, they found like copper, you know, leaching from the pipes and stuff like that. And I said, well, how does this work? You know, we wind up having to find a, basically, somebody to come and haul this as a hazardous waste away. But if you have a mechanical plant like Alexandria, they were saying where they might be able to get away with sliding a little bit of this liquid into their mechanical plant from time to time to time, where they wouldn't have to have it hauled out. We can't do that in our sewer system. Can't dump it down our sewer, and so we had to have it hauled out. But, you know, and part of it was, you know, we, as a maintenance on the library system, you know, the pumps weren't right, and so they were failing. And then as maintenance, we're, if we had to put in some fluid, we're putting in the wrong mix because we're putting in a fifty-fifty mix of glycol, and it's only supposed to be at twenty-two percent. And so what happens is when it gets really cold, it starts gelling up a little bit and the pumps have problems with it. And so, you know, what do you do? You know, do you get rid of the system?
You know, I think, I think the frustration kind of comes from is, is, you know, the system before whoever put it in didn't put it in right. But they told you it was right.
Right.
So what's right anymore?
Right.
Who's telling you what's right? And who's to figure out what?
Johnson Controls. Johnson Controls is a very reputable company. I mean, they do a lot of work at the university and stuff. And, you know, the solution that came up was to just dump it and go to, you know, an air handling system, which, you know, maybe we, maybe we could have done, but at the same time, that's not what we did.
Well, we had a lot of money invested in the system, and it didn't make any sense, at least as far as I was concerned, to start all over. Everything we spent is...
So, yeah, so it's working, it's working in the summer. It's just when it gets really cold, these, these new pumps that are in there, that's the other thing, is the new pumps that are in there are smart enough to know something's wrong, and so they'll stop. They won't just keep, the old pumps would stop, and then they'd reset themselves and they'd kick back in, they'd start working, and eventually, they'd just burn themselves out because they kept going where there's a lot more control on the pumps and things like that. I decided I'd let you know that because, you know, if, if anything else comes up, then I'm, I'm either leaving or Reggie might get called in. So that's that. The next item is, and we've talked about this before a little bit, where when we settled the last union contract, one of the issues came up was that we're building this great big, huge new water treatment plant. And actually, I can tell you over the course of probably the last five, five, six years, I've had internal discussions with, you know, we went from having, and Jay remembers this, we went from having, you know, a public works director and a utilities director and utilities foreman and a park foreman and a street foreman and all these people that were responsible for all this stuff. And then we put it all onto one person under one hat. And realistically, you know, with this new water treatment plant, and it is a bigger operation, there's many more things that are part of it, the time has really come to put in a mid-level position that can watch over water, wastewater, and deal with all the reports and the rules and the regulations and dealing with MPCA and all that kind of stuff. And so we've done that. We've sat down, we've looked at it, we've come up with the job description, we've come up with probably a good mid-level pay to put that position at. Actually, I worked with Aaron to determine whether or not that should be a union position or not. We don't think it should be because this position's going to be supervising the water, wastewater side of it. Jim will still be overall responsible, but at the same time, this will be more of a focus on the water, wastewater and utility. And there's a lot of little pieces to that. Even right now, Denko Two started taking water. And actually, we know and understand from MPCA that they're going to allow them to discharge wastewater into our system, where it's, it's got to be done the right way, it's got to be the right kind of discharge, and that's something somebody's going to have to watch over really close. But MPCA is okay with it. And so we'll probably have a little bit more sewer revenue coming in that we didn't expect from Ten, Denko Two. But they did start now drawing water from us. And the plant's, you know, able to handle that production without any problems because it was built big enough for that. Eventually, they'll switch all their water over to city water going into their plant instead of well water. And that's the requirement they have from Denko or from MPCA.
Are they happy so far?
I think so. Yeah, I haven't heard anything, so.
Good.
I mean, they're not happy paying for water and yet well water.
Yeah.
And now you're paying for it, so.
They haven't got their first bill yet?
I don't think they, you know, I don't think they have got their first bill. So that's where we're at with that. And the last piece is, I'm waiting on the union to give us a thumbs up that, that we can do what we're doing. If they don't, then we'll probably do it anyway. And then there is a process for, for them challenging whether or not that should be in. I just never, ever think a supervisor should be in the union with the same employees that are in that union. The only thing I learned is that in law enforcement, you can do that. So the sergeant in the police department is actually in the same union, yeah, union as the police officers. But that's, that's the way the rules are set up. Level-two chargers in city hall. Actually, we had a rep from MPCA came out yesterday and drove an electric car out and plugged it in, charged it before she went back. So that was kind of nice. I mentioned the dog park. I think dog users are going to have to step up and make sure that, you know, the city crews aren't trying to mull around dog crap, which is happening now. Because there are people going in there and they're not cleaning up afterwards. And one of the issues that we did have is the waste company didn't want to take the dog waste. So I'm not quite sure what's going on with that. But actually, Jim Dittbener found a source for biodegradable dougie bags to put waste in. And so what, what we'll do is we'll use those, and then the waste, instead of going in the garbage, will go in the compost pile. So that's a better solution anyway for out at the dog park.
Are there bags out there now?
There's bags out there now.
Okay.
And the women today bought those. And actually, our signs haven't come in for the dog park. We talked to M and R signs, they should be in by the end of the month because there are some signs that have rules and things like that. But people love it. I've talked to a lot of people that have been out there, and they really enjoy that dog park, so that's good. We're advertising for the sustainability coordinator. We met to talk about capital improvement projects and Chiswick Field parking lot, so we're going to work on a plan for that. And we'll be talking about that at the budget meeting. And then we'll talk about a sidewalk project, developing a sidewalk project where we'll identify sidewalks that need to be done. And then we'll put together a funding package so that, you know, if people can't afford to do it themselves, we'll put together a project and then have it done, and then just do an assessment back to them.
All exciting.
Lots of stuff going on.
Mm-hmm.
That quote, uh, from Riley's on the ballpark, um, it's, it's got to be more involved than just laying laptop over the gravel.
Yeah, we, yeah, actually the baseball association got a quote, it was about seventy-five thousand dollars to blacktop the, the parking lot, but that doesn't address the drainage. Uh, you know, because, uh, there is, there is a storm sewer in Seventh Street. Actually, there's a catch basin just to the east of the driveway going into Chiswick. You know, and ideally what we're looking at is, is, uh, putting together a nice parking lot, probably have curb and gutter around the outside, put drainage into the middle, run it to the storm sewer and then you don't have to worry about all the water running down the sidewalk past the softball field down to the ditch. Because that's what, that's what would happen if you blacktop that. It'd all go down that sidewalk to the ditch.
Right. So the seventy-five thousand, that's for that? That's not for the curb and gutter and, and making a drain?
Blacktopping the gravel that's there.
Okay.
So would they build that up and somehow slope it so it's somewhat correct or?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's what we're going to look at.
Oh, you think it would be over?
No, I don't think they'd be able to, you know, I don't think it'd work if they tried to do that.
That, that couldn't go over ground, could it?
No, I, no, I don't think, it couldn't get up to Seventh Street.
Yeah, I don't think it could get there. I don't think they could build that up enough. So they'd have to put in some underground to connect to the storm sewer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, put drains along the down slope and.
That sounds a little more involved than.
Yep.
That's, that's why that seventy-five looked really, really good, but that's just to throw some blacktop over the, what's there and it.
But we'll present a plan because I think it needs to be done next year.
Yeah.
I agree.
You know, and, you know. If anything, if anything, we spend a lot of time trying to deal with, like this spring with all that snow, it was just a mess and they spent a lot of time trying to deal with that, you know, uh, trying to get in there and plow and get that snow out of there and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, because we were down there. We didn't down where our, our snow out.
That last big snowfall we got was really bad for that baseball field. Because it was, it was already starting to thaw, you know, same way with our alleys. We knew it was really bad to try to go in and plow the alleys. So busy, that's what we're working on.
Yeah, for sure. I, I think that sidewalk project is, uh, is really a good step and, and I, I fully back the, you know, going in and finding out what's bad and, and it's got to be fixed. I mean, I'm going to fix my sidewalk. I certainly want my neighbor to fix their sidewalk, you know, whether I pay for it or pay for it to assess.
I think I mentioned it in here, um, about, maybe I didn't, about UMM.
No.
No, I didn't. Um, but one of the things, if you go out to UMM and walk around, what you're going to see, there's a company that actually does a different thing. Instead of mudjacking or replacing, they shave the high points. You know, you'll see it going into the RFC, you'll see it on campus. And actually, when you walk around, there's a few sidewalks that maybe it's only just a, a, you know, quarter of an inch or a half an inch sticking up, well, they just come in and they shave it off. And it actually doesn't look too bad, but at the same time, it's much cheaper than, you know, trying to mudjack or, uh, or come in and do a replacement. And so then I think that's one of the things that has to be on the table. Because if it was me at home, if I had just a little rise, I think I would have them come and do that. Because it wouldn't take them any, I've watched them do it. It doesn't take any time at all.
I just had the mudjacker come and do my sidewalks all the way around my house. They did a nice job. I was very happy with the work they did. And, you know, I don't know if shaving would have worked with my kids, because they had sections of my sidewalk that had settled quite good.
Right.
They moved it up, you know, left bars and chases.
Wow. Well, they could, yeah, they, they can do wonders with mudjacking.
Cool. Any, uh, any other business to come before the council?
Have we got our playground equipment installed that we purchased this spring?
No, not yet.
Do we, do we have it?
Actually, uh, we do have it. Actually, one of the, uh, we just talked about it, uh, at staff this morning. Um, one of the problems that we run into is the worst time to put in playground equipment is when it's nice. Because everybody's in the park and so they, they ran into some real safety problems, um, trying to go into a playground where all the kids are playing in the playground. So, so what they're going to do is they're going to put it in right after school starts. And then the kids will be gone. Most of them will be gone. The daycare people will be there, but, um, yeah, that's, that's one of the problems. And I've been by East Side Park and it's so busy over there. You know, that, uh, they ran into that problem last year when they were doing it, where they had kids that wanted to play on it before they even finished and they got heavy equipment around there and they didn't want to shut down the park just to come in and do that for two, three days. So that's something that, you know, we can talk about too, but that's where they're at.
Cool. Anything else? Many adjourned.